Rockdale County Board of Education work session to order. Do I hear motion to approve the GNS presented? A second?
Second, Justin.
A motion to approve the GNS presented has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Mr. Justin Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor? A six zero vote. We will now recognize visitor who would like to address the board. And we do have one card that's going to be Ms. Tina Hobbs. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. Registered speaker may not assign a year they're speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievous procedures for these. Speakers should be professional. And with respect for us that you refrain from using profane or vulgar language. And should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request to comment card, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for the meeting decorum and public participation, which was listed on the comment card. I would like to welcome Ms. Tina Hobbs.
Good evening, board. I've been thinking about this for a while. There's a lot of things that happened when I was in school, which is a long time ago. But what we learned when we were in school, we wrote with a pencil on paper. And we learned it better because we had to write it. And it stayed on mine more often. We didn't have computers. All the research we had to do was go to the library, look at books and newspapers or whatever. But I'm understanding that some of the kids now know how to go copy and paste and get their answers, turn in their homework or whatever. And I just hope that the teachers are really looking at that to give them the correct kind of grade. Because if it's from the computer, the student didn't do it. He's not learning or she's not learning anything. Also, my brother was in the seventh grade and we did diagramming sentences. If he didn't pay it, make a hundred on his test, he would have failed. But the diagramming sentences explains the noun, the verb, the adjective, the adverb, the preposition, and all that kind of thing. And I'm not sure if they're teaching that anymore or not. But I think we need to go back to the main way we were taught and learned how to do what we do in school. Also, multiplication and division and addition and subtraction. We had to memorize our multiplication tables. But every day in class, in the math class, we had a competition in the board for so many minutes for the multiplication tables. If the kids are not having to do that now, maybe that's one of the reasons they're so low in the math grades and that kind of thing. U.S. history, I hope we are teaching the correct U.S. history. I had two world culture teachers. They didn't teach. They said, read the chapter and answer the questions in the chapter. That's not a teacher, that's a director or instructor. World history, the kids need to know about that too. And also the government, how it's made and how you vote for it. They need to understand what that's about and that kind of thing. I know you're going to talk about the nutrition tonight. I just hope you find a way that you can get the kids to try some of the different kinds of foods. Because for the parents, the teachers and the cafeteria ladies, they don't eat the lunch. We need something that we can feed these kids every day that they will eat. And they said that the main thing they want to do is like the chicken nuggets or wrap sandwich or a salad or something like that. That's what they're looking for more in the schools for the kids. I would also like to have a meeting with Ms. Chesser and Ms. Naveen and Ms. Richardson. I'd like to talk about the teaching and things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, and good evening, Madam Vice Chair Jones, and to our board members, cabinet members, and those in attendance today. We have three updates from our cabinet members. And we'll begin first this evening from the Division of Leadership and Learning. We have Ms. Bethany Gillis.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chairwoman Jones, distinguished members of our board, Ms. Chesser, cabinet, and guests. I bring before you tonight an action item for advanced placement. I would like to remind you, the purpose of our advanced placement exams allows students to take college-level courses while still in high school. And it's the opportunity to earn college credit and placement through the exam offered by College Board to high schools nationwide. I was just here with you last month and I went over with you the plethora of AP courses that we offer here in our district. I just want to remind you of the number of students and number of enrollments at each of our high schools and our virtual campus and Career Academy. As I mentioned last month, each of those students and enrollment categories went up for every high school, every Career Academy, and our virtual campus. What I'm bringing before you tonight is our AP exams. If you look at the history of our AP exams from 2021, you'll notice that we have increased each year. Last year, when I came before you, we had 1,641 AP exams. Tonight, I bring before you in 2025, we had 2,133 AP exams given in our district. There is a process for the invoice billing of AP exams to ensure that we are being good stewards of the money that we are given. The first process is the AP College Board gives us a fee reduction for capstone exams. Then we're given a fee reduction for non-capstone exams. Then the state of Georgia gives us a subsidy for one STEM exam per student and then one exam per student subsidy for fee-reduced students. Then Title IV here in our district gives us one exam for a student who took more than one exam that is a free student. And then the RCPS general fund invoice comes, which is what I bring before you tonight, the action item. The recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the payment of advanced placement exam fees for students in the amount of $105,706. This was pre-approved as a line item in the FY 24-25 fiscal budget. This action item is to authorize payment of the invoice fees to the College Board for student exams taken in May 2025. The rationale is the RCPS strategic plan requires schools to provide opportunities for all students. In addition, AP exams are a component of the balance system of assessment, which allows students to participate in measures that provide data points to determine student achievement, growth, and success beyond high school. The financial impact for the district is $105,706 out of general funds. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I noticed that some of the fees are being paid through title funds. And I have heard that coming down the pipeline with issues with the current administration, that title funds may not be what we were expecting them to be. How much of the AP exam fees are paid from title funds? And what increase may that lead to?
I'm glad you asked. That's a very good question. I have that information for you. This past year, our total bill from the College Board was $121,906. Out of that, and that's once we had our College Board fee reductions and our Georgia subsidy reductions. From there, Title IV here in RCPS picked up $16,200, which brought us down to that 105 number. So yeah, very good question. Thank you.
And Beth, if I'm not mistaken, the Title I is for students on a reduced, free and reduced lunch?
So, very good question, too. So Title, out of federal programs, there's multiple titles. Title IV pays for this. Last year, when I brought this before you, Title IV paid for free and reduced students. This year, because of the free lunch that we're giving to everyone, we could only pay for free students.
Okay. So did that impact our numbers any? But the last question I have for you was, when do we know the results? I know the number of students that took the tests increased, but what are the results looking like?
So the data has dropped. We are still missing some scores out there from our late testers. But it's looking good right now. And whenever y'all are available, and Ms. Chesser would like to have me back, I would love to be able to come and present that to you.
Yes, please. I'm seeing some good stuff on Facebook.
Yeah. It's been really good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis. Next up from the Community Impact Division, we have Mr. Blaine Allen.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, board members, Superintendent Chesser, cabinet, and guests. It is my pleasure to present a positive action item to you tonight, which will increase the reimbursement we receive for school meals. Community eligibility is a meal service option for schools and school districts that serve breakfast and lunch to all enrolled students at no cost without the burden of household applications. CEP is a four-year cycle period. However, a new cycle can be started every year in April. So therefore, we can establish a new base year. So that process is identified students. Identified students are students that receive SNAP, TANF, Medicaid-free, extended categorically homeless, foster, Head Start. In doing the validation process, we had identified 10,109 students that were receiving those benefits. So when we look at school year 25 claiming percentages at the four schools, Lorraine Elementary, General Davis Middle, Heritage High School, Rockdale County High School, you will see a claiming percentage, free percentage of 75.93%. You will see a paid percentage at 24.07%. Please note, our other 16 schools in the school district, that claiming percentage for the free is 94.65%. For the paid, 5.35%. So therefore, after validation from the state, from Godot, school year 26 claiming percentage for all schools, district-wide, the free percentage, 94.08%. The paid percentage, 5.92%. So the next slide is talking about reimbursement rates. So when you look at reimbursement rates, reimbursement for the paid at breakfast is 38 cents. Reimbursement for the free is $2.84. When you look at lunch, the reimbursement for paid is 53 cents. When you look at lunch for the free, that reimbursement is $4.54. Benefits of community eligibility provision increase access to school meals at no cost to our families, increase student participation in school meals, eliminate unpaid meal charges, eliminate alternate meals, streamline the meal service operation by eliminating free and reduced meal applications. School nutrition action item, community eligibility. The recommendation, the superintendent will recommend Rockdale County Board of Education to approve community eligibility. The Georgia Department of Education approved eligibility status as of July 1, 2025. The rationale, the community eligibility provision will increase access to school meals and student participation. Student will eliminate unpaid meal charges and the need for alternate meals. CEP will also minimize the stigma of school meals as we streamline meal services. The revalidation completed on July 1, 2005, 20,005, awarded Rockdale County Public Schools a higher claiming percentage for the next four years. The financial impact increased reimbursement to the school nutrition budget. Any questions?
I'm just curious, and I honestly have no idea about the answer to this. But if I'm not mistaken, some of our title money correlates with the percentage of free and reduced students we have on free and reduced lunch. Is that correct?
And I can get our Title I Director to verify that. But there is a ratio or a proportion that is connected to that amount. So when there is that assignment, that poverty rate. And Mr. Allen, jump right on in. But there is a correlation to this, to the amount of money and how much dollars per student is assigned to each school. Yes, sir.
So in the CEP process, we have what we call a validation worksheet. And in that validation worksheet, it has each school's percentage. And when you plug that information in, I do know that Title I, I do know that E-rate, those numbers, that data that we collect helps out other departments within the school district.
My reason for asking that question is I was just curious if we eliminate the application process for verification of free and reduced lunch. Does that have any impact on title money? Like, we'd qualify for CEP, but just make sure it doesn't impact title money that we received from the federal government.
And like I said, Mr. Kenny, I'll get our Title I Director to verify this. But what it's usually used for, sir, is that they use it for that ranking. So there is a ranking process to determine, you know, out of the budget, how much each school is assigned, because they compute a dollar amount based on those percentages. And then our Title I Director, in this case, Ms. Ursula Davis, will go in and use that formula, that dollar per student. And that's how the allotment for that school is determined.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
And let me just add, why that is so important is because we need to look at that information every year because it impacts funding. So therefore, we're going to do our diligence. And I know Superintendent Chesser would want us to do that, is to look at those numbers every year to see how we can increase those numbers. Because it impacts funding.
Last school year, is that correct? 75.93 and a 24.07?
Yes. So in other words, those four schools, those four schools, which was Lorraine, General Davis Middle, Heritage High, Rockdale County High School. So that was our claiming percentage for those four schools.
Get those numbers. How do we get that information?
Okay. So in that process of that validation, we complete a CEP worksheet. And completing that information, those identified students are plugged into that system and it gives you what that percentage would be. And then the state comes back and validate that information.
That was that 10,109 students that you identified through those programs such as SNAP and Medicaid and all that. And you use those numbers
Correct.
to recalculate your percentage. And this year, we had a higher number than we had last year. So you were able to recertify us to get us to the higher percentage to get the additional funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Our CFO is here. Ms. Smith, is anything you want to add in terms of Mr. Kenny's question? Their microphone is right there, if you don't mind.
Yeah. No, I don't. But you were very clear, or he did specify that it helps our E-rate funding and our Title I funding, those percentages. And I don't really have much to add to that right now.
All right. And then, like I said, we will verify all those pieces with Ms. Davis and we'll get you that information. Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Bootonseek, you're up next, sir.
Good evening, Superintendent Chesser, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, board members, all you wonderful cabinet folks over there, and our two top-notch people keeping us online, all of our guests. Glad to be here tonight on a Happy New Year, by the way. This is starting off our new year this year, this month. I'm excited to bring you two action items tonight. The first one is school safety, open gate purchase. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of open gate units for $510,061 from Communications Technologies, Inc. This purchase is made through the TIPS Co-op number 220105. The rationale is, at the conclusion of this installation, we'll have an additional 29 units being added to our RCPS inventory, which currently we have 27. Seven additional units added to the high schools and two units installed at each elementary school. This installation will bolster one of our layers of our safety layers that we have in our schools. The financial impact, $355,061 will come from each SPOS funds. $155,000 will come out of general fund for a grant that's tagged for safety initiatives. Second action item I have has to do with the furniture. That will be going into our two schools that have been renovated, Barstail Elementary and Flat Shores Elementary School. And as we were having dinner this afternoon, pray for good weather. We're having a little delay with some of our projects and these are just renovations. So we hope things will, we have contingency plans in place. But nevertheless, we need some help with that. So think about it, say a prayer for us. The furniture for Barstail and Flat Shores, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Ernie Morris Enterprises, Inc. for the purchase of furniture for Barstail Elementary School and Flat Shores Elementary School renovation projects, contract 230301. The Barstail quote is RE652025 and the Flat Shores quote is EKT06192025. These were obtained on June 20 for a total of $963,825.11. The renovations of both schools includes updated and new furniture as outlined in the attached quotes. And this furniture will be housed by Ernie Morris until we have the needs by the different phases that we're bringing this furniture into our school. And that concludes my two action item requests.
Yes, I have a couple, each one. On the open gate?
Yes.
Okay, so right now we have two at each high school? And is it one at each middle school or two at each middle school? Do you?
I don't recall. I think it's two at each middle school and three at the high schools.
Three at the high schools?
I believe, right, and two at RCA and likewise at Epic. I don't have that number in front of me, but.
Okay. So this particular purchase is going to bring in two at each elementary school and then have some extras to use?
At the secondary school.
At the secondary.
Focused on the high schools.
Focused on high schools, okay. So, and we haven't talked about this in a while. So what, how do we deploy those now? But is, do we, since we have them at every school now, will we now deploy them every day, every couple of days? What is the plan of usage for the investment?
Superintendent is charged, we have these devices and we have obviously threats every day in our world that we live in. So we will use those, deploy them on a very regular basis. Now, to give, I would say daily would be the optimum case, but it takes manpower, takes use to go with these. We will purchase, the big purchase for here is the elementary schools, right? So we will purchase these as our, if you all approve it tonight, as we hope you will, for the safety of our kids, as our cash flow gets in place, we'll purchase these and start to implement them into our schools by zones.
Okay. And you go ahead, because I'll talk about the furniture after we finish the question.
Open gate, what we're talking about is for elementary schools, right? And you made
Pardon me, yes, ma'am.
statement that we're getting more threats. So do we have any data showing that we have increased threats at our elementary school? And if so, can we see that data, like what kind of threats we're having? Whether it's knives, guns, whatever that could possibly be? Can we get that information on what was it like this last school year? Is there an increase compared to the previous school year? And if so, what kind of threats are we getting? How, the only reason why I'm asking this question is because when you talk about elementary school, we have clear facts. But we also too know that we have a lot of parents that feel very uncomfortable about deploying that. I have a concern to invest in that and we're not using it on a regular basis. Because of course, the purpose of it is because we have threats. And according to us, it's an increased threat. So that means that we should have an increase of using that tool. And so I just want to know, what do the threats look like? What is our data saying the increase shows that validates that we need to invest in this? Or is it because we're getting this grant and we got to spend it on something, right? And maybe because we're using that, this might be the best option? So I just want more information on it. And I did hear you say we're going to take a vote tonight?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay.
This is normal process. I'm just sharing information tonight.
Okay.
So you asked a lot of questions. So let me see if I can put them in a little bundle and answer most of them. So when I say increased threats, I made that statement. I'm not talking specifically for Rockdale, although I would bundle us into the whole fact of community and the state and time we live in, right? All across, all across school campuses, nationwide, worldwide. So this here is one layer that we have implemented and deployed to help us reduce the risk of things being brought into the school that shouldn't be brought in school. Knives, like you mentioned, weapons, et cetera. We have data from the Safety Department that I'll be glad to get for Mr. Chesser to share with you of where we have been and how that has reduced numbers of things that we've found, including even baked items, things that just contraband kids shouldn't have in school. And so we can show that from our secondary level where that has impacted us. Obviously, for elementary, we have deployed those things on case-by-case basis with a few that we have here housed just as a tool to use to random check, just sort of like drug and alcohol, random checks for bus drivers. You don't know when you'll get called in, but here it is. So it's a preventive mode in that sense, Ms. Brown. With us having the option to deploy them across the county, that will obviously give us the opportunity to do it on a regular basis as we've been asked and charged to do, which we will do. And I think it's just an extra layer of security that we have the option of going after and deploying. And it's anything we can do to make our kids and staff safer, I think we have due diligence to do that. As far as spending the grant there, because As far as spending the grant there, because there's nowhere else to spend it, we can spend that money time and time and time again, you know how it is in the world we live in.
Why ask the question?
Well, because of, because we have a lot of things in our, in our East SPOS that are important for all of us. And it's a, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of, there are a lot of things we need to get done. And Ms. Smith shared with us, we did have this grant that we could use to purchase part of these. And so we had broken it down into three different sections. But when we get it right down to it, we need them at all locations, primarily at the elementary school, because that's where we don't have them deployed at this point in time on a regular basis. And that was the bigger chunk, so we just, we're going to buy them when we get the, if this is approved and as we work with our team on the East SPOS Budget Committee, when the money's here, we're going to go forward with that.
Okay, is there a timeline on spending this grant and is this grant renewable?
Don't know. Do you know, Miss Joyce? It's good, it's good use for it.
Is this part of the safety grant? That seven hundred and something thousand? Or whatever that number is?
Um, yes, we were, we received, I think it was forty seven thousand dollars per school, forty six thousand. Last year, but then they went and awarded additional amount and in the midterm, we got that money. And so we got it so late that I saved it for FY twenty six year. And so some of that will go to safety personnel and the other little portion that was left, we will use towards that.
You got, you got two.
Thank you, so this is not a small ticket item, Mr. Boot and Seek.
I said, right.
So what, if we approve this, what I don't want to happen is we purchase the, you know, the additional open gate. Apparatuses and then they sit in a closet. So the question becomes logistically, if if we wanted to utilize open gate at every school, every single day. Would that be a possibility and currently, and if not, what would it take to get to that point?
This takes us to that point.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have that capacity currently. In fact, no elementary school has their devices assigned to them. We take them from here on a random schedule and have deployed them over the last few years when we've had these devices. This will give every school, elementary school, their two, their two devices. And we'll be able to handle the two locations where students, the staff come in the building, bus lane and the and the child interest from parent ridership.
So they're currently folks trained at each individual school that can use the open gate.
They are, and they will have farther training, but that's that's ongoing, make sure we do it right.
Thank you so much.
And I'll just add, if you don't mind, this Jackson, Madam Chair. I think the question was asked about our current number and so. We have three at our traditional high schools, three at our middle schools each, two at the central office, two at RCA, two at Epic, that's our current. Inventory, but going to your question, and I want to be mindful because we are talking safety, so I always want to make sure that we preserve the integrity of our safety plans. But we want to implement and enforce strict safety daily and we need to make sure that we have. The right equipment in order to do so, and so having the limited number has made it more difficult. To do it to the degree that we want to do it, and so that is why we need the additional equipment in order to get that done. So we have talked in depth about the expectations of how it will be used, the frequency of which it will be used, but in order to do that, we need to make sure we have the correct inventory on hand.
I do have a question, but I know Akita wanted to finish her question, I'm going to, because mine is, mine is a little segue, so you can go ahead.
This one is is real simple, so the quotes that we received on the furniture, did we do, did we get multiple quotes or did we only go with that?
I mean, with the tips process, which obviously they have their process of getting those those quotes.
Okay, and this was the least cost or was it just the quality and?
Yeah, but when that's those free.
States.
Those, they've been, what's the word, one day.
I know what you're talking about.
Gone in and checked them out and they've done due diligence with those spices. And I believe we had dashed on the accident itself, a full fledged. Purchase usage that we're going to have in each of those schools.
Okay.
So Phil, mine was a slight secretary.
Okay.
You talked about the internal furniture coming to like Flat Shores, I drove by a few days ago and I'm wondering with us out of, we are what, three weeks out for school? Are we going to be ready for students at Flat Shores Elementary?
Absolutely.
Oh, my gosh.
May not be there, the new furniture, we have a contingency plan we put in place to to work around that. So as you know, Flat Shores, we already have, we're using the pod and we already have those those classrooms equipped. So we will not have to move furniture in and around. Barstail, the furniture that we were taking out for that one wing, we may have to work around that. But we have high priority with Mr. Dixon getting these things rolling. So, but we have a plan in place, well, we're having school on August, what, first, second, third, fourth, whatever it is. For us, it's a lot sooner than that, but we'll go for it.
And so that's why I said I'm segueing a little bit, because I was actually not talking about the furniture, but the state of trying to get into Flat Shores Elementary. The construction is, I don't know how we're going to get the parents in. By August fourth, so that's, I said, I'm segueing a little bit, but do you have a timeline or do you guys know what that looks like for families to return to school on August fourth?
So Monday morning, excuse me, not Monday morning, this coming Monday, we will have a, we have a team meeting set up for our contingency A, B, and C plan. On where we'll be, as we talked at dinner tonight, the rain is impacting the asphalt put down. And the curbs that we were putting in their sidewalks, etc., so yes, we have a plan in place to. For some temporary things that we have to do it that way, but school will start on time and and we'll make it happen. It may not be the prettiest thing in town, but when we get done, we'll be happy and you all can cut the ribbon and have a new refurbished. Fifty year old some elementary school, be brand new. Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, Phil.
I promised to wrap up very briefly, Madam Chair, I just want to share that I did have the opportunity today to attend the MLB All-Star Legacy Baseball Field. Unveiling at the Barstail Boys and Girls Club, so it was an exciting thing to see. Courtesy of the Atlanta Braves and they worked in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta, so several of our students were there attending. The event, they were in their Braves attire, the Braves mascot was there, they got to see their new field, the new scoreboard that was there. And the Boys and Girls Club, they they were also awarded a brand new two thousand twenty five Suburban that they can use there at the site. So it was an exciting thing to see, especially for our children and the fact that they will have that. Nice facility there to play the game of baseball. And then the last thing I do want to share while we have Mr. Allen in attendance. Is that today, the Department of Education School Nutrition Division announced that eighteen Seamless Summer Option Programs, or SSO Operators in Georgia. Were awarded the United States Department of Agriculture Food and Nutrition Service Turn Up the Beat Award for two thousand twenty four. And so the Turn Up the Beat Award recognizes outstanding summer meal program, school food authorities and sponsors across the nation. Who have worked hard to offer high quality meals to children that are appetizing, appealing and nutritious during the summer months. And I'm very, very proud to say that Rockdale County Public Schools is one of nine gold award winners, so congratulations to Mr. Allen and his school nutrition team. That concludes my remarks, ma'am.
Question for the superintendent, may I? Ms. Chesser, you know, we are all aware of the different changes that's going on at the federal level of government and how it trickles down to state and local government. So I just wanted to know if you can speak a little bit on how, you know, the withholding of funds. At the federal level is impacting the programs in Rockdale County Public Schools. As it relates to, I'm reading after school program, athletic training, ESOL programs, all the different things. And speak on that a little bit and what are some of the contingency plans we have in place to mitigate the loss of funding? That's a lot, but a synopsis will do.
No, it's it's actually a great question and I know Mrs. Gillis is on pins and needles at that, at the very thought of that, but you're right. Mrs. Duncan, we have, we're currently aware that some of our federal dollars, meaning our Title Two, our Title Three and Title Four, along with our Twenty First Century Grants are on hold. And so Joyce has calculated that to be over two million dollars that we're are currently frozen at this particular point in time. And so what we have directed to our school teams is to not spend any of those dollars as of right now. That does affect for those of you who aren't familiar with Title Two, that's our training money. Our Title Three, we support our English learners, Title Four, we had things like counseling services in there, you heard Mrs. Gillis talk about us paying for. Those AP exams and so then with our Twenty First Century Program, you've heard them previously come in and talk about the after school services. And tutoring that's provided, so with all of that, we have asked them to hold, I can tell you that Dr. Gibbons is slated to meet. With her team, we've started some initial review, we've had to make some initial adjustments. Things like our professional learning days that's coming up in just a couple of weeks, we've had to make some very, very quick adjustments. But what we're doing right now is doing a reprioritization, I mean, when you know you have two million dollars less that you don't currently have. We have to go back in and make those adjustments and do that priority prioritization of what we can spend and who, what we need to spend it on first. Until we can get a deeper understanding of when the money may be released and if the money is going to be released. And under what conditions it may be released, so it is affecting us in terms of our school system. We do have other pots, when I think the question came up about Title One, how do we reutilize some Title One funds a little differently? We do have safety net dollars that can be used for tutoring, but how do we make sure that those things cover the gamut of some of what the Twenty First Century Program has done? So we've had some tough conversations, some difficult meetings in which we're trying to really hash and comb through that. I will say there were some personnel positions that were included in our Title Four. We are working through our Human Resources Department to shift those into some vacancies right now. So that, you know, those individuals are in stabilized positions and that we're not. Worried about where those salaries are going to be drawn, so we have made that move with and talked to those identified people as well, so there are two. Individuals that were affected in that, so again, not the way we wanted to go into the start of the school year, but understanding that this is where we are, we're working to make those adjustments.
So the goal is to shift into positions that are open and not a loss of job for employees.
No loss of job, and I'm glad you, yeah, let me clarify it again, no one has lost a job. What we did do is I met with Chief Stevens, we sat down and we found comparable positions for those two individuals that are currently vacant at some schools and that's what we're in the process of doing.
And my follow up on that is, do we have personnel in place? And I ask this question because we are the governance team and we need to all be abreast of what is going on nationally, locally and at the state level. So my reading shows that if we, the question is, do we have someone in place that is monitoring these changes? Because my, my reading is showing that if Congress doesn't pass this in forty five days or does nothing about it. Then those funds are just sitting there, so who do we have in place that's monitoring the situation so that we're not making? Adjustment that is unnecessary, if you understand what I mean.
I would say not just myself, but the cabinet members, I mean, we're attending meetings and on our calls with our. Department of Education counterparts and then staying abreast of what's happening nationally too, so yes, ma'am, we are trying to. Review, make those, ask those questions and really get, like I said, to see what allowable moves that we can make based on the the pieces that we're told. The guidance that we've gotten from the DOE has been just that, that those monies are frozen until further notice and that we just need to go ahead and plan accordingly, so that's that's what we're doing. To make sure that we can still start the school year off as as best possible, but understanding that it did require some critical. Urgent adjustments at this point in time. And so just to give you an example, I can tell you our professional learning money is over six hundred thousand dollars, Ms. Gillis. So just our training money alone, six hundred and fifty nine thousand, so when you think about the types of training. And you know, pre-planning is a big time for us because we have all of our teachers back, that's the time where we usually can offer some very concentrated training. But when you're, don't have access to six hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars worth of training, it requires us to kind of go back and repunt, if you will, and that's what we've been doing.
Well, Beth, thank you, because you're the one that triggered that thought, I was thinking about it earlier this week and as you went over the AP numbers. And knowing that stuff like that is going to be affected, that's what kind of triggered the thought that I was reading up on that this week and was trying to follow what the process in Congress was. And so thank you for that report. Thank you, Shirley.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information, I would like to ask the board members to please review the information. Please review the June twenty twenty five board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid, we will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There's no old business or new business to discuss. The cabinet has provided an overview of action items for the board to vote on next week, is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda?
I move that we place items one through eleven on consider agenda and twelve, I'm sorry, we'll do twelve.
So all items?
Yes.
Palmer is second. Janie Jones. A motion to consider, a motion to consider action item on a consent agenda, regular session has been made by Mr. Kita Palmer and second by Vice Chair Janie Jones, is there any discussion? Question?
Um, under items six and nine, why those separated out, what's the personnel personnel?
One is for policy.
One is just a policy change, we did for one through seven, those are policy changes through our policy review.
Okay.
And then number nine is actual.
It's going to be the actual personnel that we're doing, okay, no other question.
Okay, no other discussion, all in favor? Seven zero vote, the motion is approved. Do I hear motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? A second? Okay. A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Vice Chair Janie Jones, any discussion? All in favor? A seven oh vote. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? The meeting? A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Vice Chair Janie Jones. The meeting is now, y'all want to be all in favor, y'all will still all in favor? Seven oh. The meeting is concluded at seven oh six.